I think basically page three is the same thing. It's the same thing as page two. It's just our, it's our schedule with what would have been on page two black tape, I think.
Hey, what you up to? I got a question for you, and I'm gonna put you on speaker. Okay, on this holiday stuff, how many pages was it supposed to be? Two or three? Three? Well, I only got two. I got the holidays, I got the holidays, and I got page one.
You got Virginia State Holiday.
Yeah, Virginia State Holidays.
You got Virginia, but you didn't get federal.
Federal, uh-uh.
Alright, um, if I send it to you, can you run get it?
Yeah, I can.
Alright, I'll send it to you right now. That's correct, the federal is the same as the state that's blacked out.
Is the federal the same as the ones that's blacked out on the state paper?
Um, the federal is exactly the same as the state, um, except, let me see. With that, with that Lee Jackson Day?
Can you hear Melody?
Yeah, I can hear.
We did not have Lee Jackson Day.
They don't have Lee Jackson on it.
With that Lee Jackson?
Uh, go ahead and send it to me, and I'll go print it off.
I will send it to you right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I tried to do the Lee Jackson Day.
Lee Jackson Day is in the state holiday in some years. Northern was in October.
Uh, Lee, doing away with Lee Jackson Day, Thanksgiving Eve, the day after Thanksgiving, and Christmas Eve. Which one of those dates did you not want us to get rid of? Uh, Wayne, for Judy, uh, we're, this one? That? I don't know if everybody got one now or not. Um, so, on a certain one, alright, so.
No, but no, we don't get any stuff at the work session.
They're, they're, they're looking at doing away with some of the holidays that we have now. And it was supposed to have been three pages, and you know. So Pat, we sent.
Is that look like the whole thing, or just here?
Um, that's just for the town. So is everybody enjoying the pollen? But we're gonna be enjoying all the green and all the flowers. Oh, God, yes. I cut a rain, I cut a rain on Saturday.
Well, see, I didn't say, I had to wait, because I had so much more to stay in the backyard than just.
I still have.
I think if I tried to, I still have a problem. Oh, he said I was a bummer. I could, I thought this, he couldn't come fishing though.
I'm still debating on giving some oil and putting it in. Digging it out a little bit more, putting some oil in there. Then I decided against it, because we got cats that roamed in. They come with them.
What I had there, they used to be just a little pond when it rained a lot. Richard Gray used to ice skate back there.
Uh, it's, it stayed dry for a really long time, the last couple of years, but she's full again. She, she's full of water again. I was starting, I was starting.
And I'm part of the woods part, you know, that's where they used to ice skate.
Um, because when we, shoot, the first several decades that we were there, you, you couldn't, it was full of water, full, full of water. Um, and then, we had the last few years where you could actually walk back in there. But, um, this season, it's full of water. How many?
When, when I lived over there, we'd have, never a problem with water.
We can get a meat dog, and everybody is full and give it a rest.
I, I think because all of us are cutting the trees, and there's not as many trees, so that the water may be. I don't know what it is, but, and, you know, you know, we brought in, I don't know how many loads of dirt we brought in, and, um, I'd actually talked to Willie Nunley several, several years back, before he had passed away. And going, what does Jared do? Eat dirt?
I know you work.
Um, because you wouldn't even know that we brought any dirt in, the amount of water that's staying. And I think we brought rocks in, we brought dirt in, we brought rock in, and we brought more dirt.
We have pan and a crock.
And it just, it's like it just eats it.
And we cleaned up the lot next to us, because we hold that, and, you know, every, between every other house, there was foundation dug.
Yeah.
Mosquitoes were terrible.
Um, and I wasn't here when the foundations, but you may have been the one that had told me, somebody had told me about foundations.
All those foundations were dug at the same, and he built, must have backed up, you know, every other lot.
So, um, I'm glad the one on either side of me never got to the lot. I like having that extra lot, and I like Owen and Carolyn having that extra lot between us.
I've been tired cleaning that one up.
So, so, yeah, because I, Wayne and I talked to them, maybe the fifth year after we were here, um, that we would have first option if they had decided to sell, so that. And the lots aren't big enough, even if you sold off to somebody. They're not big enough now, but there's zoning regulations, there's no issue. Nobody like to worry about it.
The savings of the holidays, getting them missing the page, um. We were, before the, we were waiting for copies of the scholarship.
I miss having a clock up there.
Me too.
I know, it used to be something there.
It died. Nope. We need to come on, Mr. Barrett.
For one second.
He's happy now, yeah. I think that thing is all good.
Unless we're hungry. Unless we're hungry.
Oh, listen to him.
Just listen to him. Yeah. What you talking about?
Babies and puppies.
Babies and puppies. Come on, I need a plug, people. We have children. We have children. You're pretty, my dear doll, we can get you another printer. Thanks for my case matter.
Yeah, this is. So everybody got one? Yeah, I think everybody. Alright, so, um, this is a work session, even though we're up here instead of in there, like we normally are on the work session. Um, and.
I heard more cane on that one, but nobody communication.
They work.
Are they working?
No.
Everybody wait.
Check, check, working now.
Okay. This is our work session for April the fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, all council members are present, other than Omar, and he is on vacation. Um, we don't, April the first. Yeah, April the first. Um, we don't normally call roll call or, or anything at, at work sessions. We just, just what council members are actually working on. Um, so, uh, we do have some information from Pat regarding, um, ADA requirements. I'm assuming she's referring to our building here, which is something that we've talked about before. If we had somebody in a wheelchair that needed to come through that door, or, up, up here, that, uh, it really was not friendly for walkers, wheelchairs. Um, if you have the two canes on your arms that you have to use. Um, so I'm assuming that's what she was referring to, was, was that, um.
I think Brandon had looked at them, and what we are looking at, because we gotta get some people here to look at it, tell us fixtures, the best way to do it, is put a handicap hybrid on the front of the building, open that corner, put a sidewalk from the parking pad, and enlarge this door for handicap accessibility. Also, the door that goes into the town manager's office needs to be widened. All the other doors are accessible. And that really needs to be done, like we mentioned earlier.
It can be done anyway, you know, for anybody to end up in a wheelchair.
We've got to get some bids, some people out here to see what this is gonna cost, and a time frame, but that's what we're looking at now.
Yes, ma'am.
Was all council members contacting about this?
No one's been contacted, Brandon just mentioned he thought that was the best way to do it.
Oops.
Brandon, and we've not discussed it. I thought we're here to like the room.
To reemphasize, uh, the sidewalk, pretty much adjoining this door here, this has more flat land. We're trying to make that more van accessible, um, because of the building. Moving forward, we need to make it more ADA compliant, the best we can. Um, but, look at those, I thought it was worth thirty-six cents. I didn't measure that one, I measured that one.
Oh, is that what thirty-six?
That one's thirty-six, huh? And I swear, I didn't measure that one. Who had to do more research?
Um, and before we actually look at sidewalk or anything, if you actually open that door, we're actually on parson's property. The lot beside us does not belong to us. We only have, like, a foot on the side of the building, so we would need to get in touch. One, we, we need to get some specs drawn up as to what contractors needed to do for us. And we would also need to get in touch with Nancy and George and see if they would allow us to do that. Or if they would even entertain donating or selling at a cheap price for our big stuff. Will you be willing to work up those specs, Brandon?
Yes, I'm on, I'm on it. I do more research on what it, what it's gonna fall out. Because this door, only other option, you take that door, you might bust that dang, because that, whoever built that up, that, that's not smooth. That's, that's a tripping hazard, is what it is in that door.
We need to take that out.
There are possibilities.
And that way, we won't have to ask the parsons. Plus, I think up here on this stuff, when the sidewalk kind of need, because you know, that's kind of rough and, and rough and.
It will fix two things, then. Fix that, yeah, I mean, I'm up for, that's a good option, because that'll fix that issue we got, though. The guy that slipped, actually get it slipped and gravely cracked. Water would be up at the door, ice, snow, place. That might be an option, that door.
So you're gonna check both, both ways?
Do you wanna reach out for, like, concrete work? I only know one guy that does that.
Barry Ray?
Yeah, these one, like, the two of them, very, uh, rough.
Yeah, one of them's a king.
That's the only two I've ever knew of. Y'all want three coats, we have, uh, risen hounds. Y'all want three coats, and we all walk from it.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. We're gonna move on to the rest of our room?
Yeah, the rest of our room.
Uh, Donald went down Friday after we had all that rain, and there are two leaks. So we first thought it may be coming from the units that we had put up, maybe they were not sealed, so, uh, we called the installer, they came down Friday, no, I'm sorry, Donald checked it Thursday. Friday morning, the installer of the new units came down, uh, checked the seals around the new, um, AC, and checked the seals around everything that's on top of the roof, and that is not where it's coming from. So, um, they said it's the roof looking. And I have called two roofers today, if anybody knows, and, trying to get someone to come and look at it, and maybe give us some estimates of what the issue is and the cost of repairing it. So if anybody knew a roofer, that, give me his name, we can put him on the list.
Is it a bale cup roof, what is it?
I think it's a flat roof.
Robber proof.
Yeah, but it's. A rocker roof, what is it?
I, I, I'm not bad, I don't know.
It's, it's white, it's, it's white bitumen.
What?
It's white bitumen, and it's a.
Like a membrane?
It's, it's a, a very thin membrane. It's, it's not like the black bitumen that's, that's thicker, this is a white bitumen.
And most of those don't last probably over ten years.
Did David get his license?
He got some aid.
He cutting grass and stuff, I don't think he would do roofing.
But, yeah, yeah, like, we can always call, uh, there's a company, they give somewhere nice, and we, we can certainly put him on the list and get him, get some estimates.
Those leaks are they the same ones that we saw from while I left?
It might be, I don't know.
I, I don't know.
Because I've got pictures of them.
Yeah, um, no, because those were, um, those were the old seals from, uh, Jones Electric, that, um, Timothy went after.
One of the leaks is when you walk through the painting doors into the kitchen, the very first cooking unit, right above that, and the other one is all the way down to the far right, near the cookers that were custom made. I don't think everybody.
The smokers, you know, smokers?
I bet on the opposite end, the smokers are, it's on the opposite end of the smokers. It didn't flood by any means, but that was a good sized pipe, made places.
Uh, anybody in the audience have any suggestions on any roofers?
It was, um, Brandon Keed.
Keed, I don't know.
Keed and some construction.
Yeah, great, they like Kevin.
I think he's an avoider.
Okay, good.
He does pretty good work.
Anybody up top us? That's a start, okay.
Roofs are us, out of Gaston.
Say that again.
Roofs are us, out of Gaston.
Down to that rear one. I'll build, got to get your license.
Gaston? Okay, that's a good start.
With the branding, I asked him about that concrete too, to see what he says.
What is that?
To, oh, the contractor, Brandon Keed, just see, if he does concrete, he's in the constructions, I'm looking, does concrete, now.
Okay.
Said you gonna call him.
I do that.
Temporary staffing.
Have you got a suggestion?
We have two temple areas, um, through the agency. One started Friday, and another one started today, they will be working the door all week. We have had some applications, both for the workers' position and the supervisors', um, position. We've not gone over them or anything, we're just waiting to see how many we get. We did place ads in the Sussex City Dispatch and the Brunswick Times Dispatch. And we put some, um, applications throughout town, some of the gyms. And we wanna wait till we get all we can, and, and then the council and the mayor and the town council, um, the town manager will go over those and try to select someone as quickly as we can.
We also need to go through V E C. V E C. Virginia County.
Oh, I think, yeah, I think she.
Um, it was announced, uh, at our last, at the call meeting, um, Donald's last day is the eighth, and Timothy has already got. Uh, prior department payments? Prior department normally gets five thousand dollars quarterly.
These payments were made. Um, also, the fifteen thousand dollars from the antercalities check came in, and that has also been given to the bad apartment, so as of right now, the town and the bad apartment are in good standings.
Um, time clock, uh, the ti, I, I'm not sure what this is, what this is for, but Judy and the time clock don't work. That we have, it is actually, you actually use your thumbprint, and it will not accept Judy's thumb.
Right, Donald said it should take this out, did, did it take Donald's, if you remember?
Sometimes, but it, we could, we could never get it to accept Judy's thumb at all. It would not read her, her print.
Is there a secondary way? Can you, can you say to put it in?
Um, I'm not sure, I, I, I'm honestly not sure, um, it, it may be.
Pretty sure it's, it's able.
But, yeah, it, it will not accept Judy's thumb.
Is it just her print, and nobody else?
Uh, yeah, it's just, it's, it's just me. Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't know.
Donald says sometimes it won't take care.
I don't, I don't know. Um, uh, we tried both thumbs. At first, because it says that you, if you have any grease or, or lotion or anything, but, uh, because I questioned Judy. Did you just lotion your hands or something? And, no, and she even went and soaked her hands, dried her hands, and then, and then we tried the other thumb, and then we tried. So she actually tried all ten of her fingers, and, so I. So she actually tried all tens of her fingers, and so I actually picked that out of total.
So you think the time clock can be reprogrammed?
It can probab- it can probably be reprogrammed for a pin instead of a print.
It's gotta be, it's, it's a secondary way to go into it. We'll look at it one good night.
I think it has access codes, it's literally a purchase, like, you know, you buy a jeans, you buy a jean, you buy a, you know.
That's what I was thinking then, if you had like some, some, like a card.
Why couldn't you use that? Cards are actually talking.
Um, I'm not sure if this is, this one is actually set up.
Adam said he would take a look at it, and that he can. Glad you said that.
So, um, holidays, yeah. State or federal. Um, what we actually have at, at the moment, um, which we also have this list where it says Virginia State Official Holiday Holidays. Um, our ordinance actually kept all of the holidays that we originally had when Brandon had suggested going to the, the state holidays. Um, that actually included a personal floater for the employees, which most of them actually took their birthday off for that, and that's not only. But what's being proposed is taking away Christmas Eve, taking away the day after Thanksgiving, taking away Thanksgiving Eve, and taking away Lee Jackson Day. So that would include New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Junior's Birthday, George Washington Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, and Juneteenth.
Yeah, the reason why we, the reason why we went to state, uh, followed the state calendar, I've been following it for the last seventeen years of my career. Um, it was the senate to give the employees a little bit more time off, more time with their family and the holidays. That was one of the reasons why, but I, I, I would support whichever way the council wants to go. Y'all think the federal calendar works well, it doesn't, you know, put a schedule down, and, uh, I thought we put something in there as well, with the state, uh, calendar. That if, one of those days they had to work, they could adjust it all later.
Yes.
That, that was the idea, to give people more time off, with their family around the holiday. But, I mean, either way, y'all wanna go, I'm fine. Go, go, we go state, I mean, what, what do y'all think?
Take that, just take.
Well, you know, Brandon, the state, you don't always get Christmas Eve.
Yeah, yeah, depends on the fall, the fall.
You don't, you don't get New Year's Eve.
Yeah, but also, uh, weekend.
It depends on how it falls, but falls during the week, and you know, yeah, and if you get it, most times, like, the holidays give you a happy day of Christmas.
Four days.
No, it's three.
Three.
Three, three days, three holidays. It's one got, uh, fourteen.
Cause yeah, she's got taking away Lee Jackson Day.
You're losing four and add one.
Well, Lee Jackson Day, you've got to stay holidays away though.
Got you. Yeah, I think federal holidays, bank holidays are good enough.
I think it'll stay like it is, and you want to add some, you can add June, Juneteenth or whatever the thing.
Well, since we've already got.
We already got that. We already got that.
And then we'll list.
Um, this, this is, this is what she printed off the computer. This isn't from, this isn't from our ordinance. This is something she printed off the computer.
That's trash.
Yeah, I think we should leave it the way that it is.
I think we should leave it the way it is.
Whether they're new employees or people that have been here for twenty-five years. We, we should take care of our employees.
All of that, it's been done. May she, and this should be certain somebody, turn around next month, the next two months, and turn it down, and do something else, and change it again.
We, we can leave it like it is throughout the remainder of the first career, and just starting to do this, cause we'll go with federal holidays.
No, I, I think it needs to stay like, you do, you stay holidays.
It's, it's for everybody else.
Well, I think federal holidays are nothing to compare.
If we stay with state, this is my opinion. The third Tuesdays and Thursdays that fall on Eves, should be work a half a day to pick trash up. That way you don't lose the day during the week.
And that's what, that's what they, that's what they normally do anyway.
Pick trash up.
And then just, cause the what, the way that the ordinance reads is if they have to work like a trash day, then they get a comp day a different day.
But you're giving, but you're, then you're giving eight hours to four hours.
So.
You're giving, you're giving eight hours off.
Mm, 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 no. If, if, if they work that four, four hours to pick up trash on that day.
You're gonna give them eight and one hours off?
No, they get four hours of comp time. If they work four hours, they get four hours of comp time.
That's not a whole day though.
If they work eight hours, they get eight hours of comp.
But do they just pick up trash on a half a day? They don't get my house, that one's off, right?
Um, it, it depends on how heavy the day is. Most of the time, if they don't have to go to the landfill, they're finished twelve, twelve-thirty.
Right, and they don't, we should go to the landfill to the next day anyway.
Yeah, if you think around the holidays, you're gonna have a lot more trash. Thanksgiving, Christmas, you're gonna have packages, you're gonna have more than I can understand.
My third much, my trash.
What a majority says.
Yeah, I'm. That was the reason for the state, was we were just trying to give them more time to adjust, a lot, a little more flexibility.
There's something you don't have to have, so if y'all talk to, if you people come in, if you have, you got to do something.
Exactly. That's why I said.
Exactly.
We need to go on a satellite bomb before we hire new people.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just afraid on that, I mean, that, that's something you got to have.
And that'll actually be on the agenda next week. All right, is anybody working on anything else?
Oh, I didn't call back.
Oh, sure, sure.
Like what? They've been watching. No, would, no, you said, is anybody else working?
Working on anything?
That's a lot of your holidays for this, for this side. I just think, I think this.
Somebody for restaurants or?
Oh, it's good, mine is good.
We got two small things. I wanna see what the council thought about this. Um, April eighth, um, twenty twenty-four would be Donald's last day. I wanna look at possibly getting a plaque, gift card, something, years of service award or something. Cause he was with the town, what, twenty-two years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay. So, yeah, I mean, that's just a suggestion. I didn't know if they offered that, but.
We should do something.
I, I just think, I just think it would be nice to present it with a nice plaque or something, a gift card for dinner, I, you know, that's something, y'all, whatever y'all, just throw it in that.
Well, you've been twenty-five years, you need to give us something.
Need you.
But I'm gonna say, I agree that working that, that many years.
I don't know if he does plaques.
Top hand.
What's that?
Top hand.
Top hand does plaques, okay. I didn't know if that was something we could possibly look at, maybe give me? What y'all think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a good, yeah, I think it's a good idea, Brandon.
Yeah, we need to, we all play, like, possibly a gift card or something, you know.
Yes.
Down, stuff like that. I mean, I, I, that's just, I think it would be good. He served the community for that long, so. We're not good at this weekend, get it for him. Y'all think we got it done for next Monday? They play, he is next Monday.
Well, he's gonna use a personal day Monday.
Well, he is.
He's gonna use a proper, like, would you, cause he's gonna use a proper that Monday?
Maybe get a license up here, or even a plaque or whatever. If you could pass it on to him, maybe pass to attend the meeting Monday, I mean, that one.
About what time Monday?
To the meeting. Put that on the top of the agenda.
Come to the meeting, what time?
Friday, yes. Friday, the, uh.
Yeah. I mean, if he comes to meet on Monday night, that probably would be a neat idea. But that's what I'm gonna say, you could do it, you could present it to him, you know, when, if, you know, at the meeting, and I just, I think. I like that idea.
How y'all wanna do, y'all working, working on it?
Who's gonna get in touch with Top Hand?
You know, by the time, you get a couple?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got you.
Just reach out to him.
I'll talk to Sarah Jane, she, she manages, I can talk to her.
Who's that?
Sarah Jane.
Richardson.
Okay, so what are we looking at, uh, as far as the plaque? Are putting one on it, how big, when you want it made, I mean, put, put, put your ideas.
So you, you have service?
Get some samples of Brandon, let you see him.
For Monday night.
You gonna be.
We need the plaque for Monday.
I want it like Monday.
Are you gonna make, are you gonna make that thing?
I don't know. But, but we can say if it's a lot of money.
Yeah, they can do it that first.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't have time on the line, boy.
Okay, so what I do is take a picture of it and send it to everybody.
That's good.
And if you don't like it, then we'll find some others. Okay.
Turn around that back.
And you wanna put like, we can do this.
About eight by ten?
Yeah, at least eight by ten, sometimes.
Something like wood with a gold.
Yep.
Yeah.
Years of service, faithful employment, serving the town of Jerry.
When did he go to work too?
He's been here for twenty-five years, March, um, March the seventeenth, that's his twenty-first.
So put it from block, block to block, block.
Um, what is his full name? I don't know. I know it's Donald's, is that just a name?
That's all I know, it's Donald.
His, his middle initial is A R, but I don't.
R?
R, yeah, but I don't know what it stands for.
S, S, E, A, B, O, R, A.
S, A, B, O, R.
Y'all have anything with his name on it?
Yeah, we do. I've seen it spelled both twice.
But it's just, the, yeah, we just have the middle initial.
Okay, got it, I got it. Now, you said, uh, gift card.
Yes, which I like.
What night are we gonna do this?
Well, I think maybe nine.
They can't be able to accept it, we can only remember.
Well, you could, you could always call him and ask him to come, and we could present it to the town council and town.
Did you have a gift card in nine, Brandon?
What dollar amount for gift card?
I'm not really, yeah, I mean, I haven't. What y'all think?
Hundred dollars at least for twenty-five years. I, I don't know.
A hundred dollars at least for twenty-five years?
I, I'm gonna tell you. I, I'm making more like two fifty.
Yeah, that's what I was, I mean, as long as I eat a lot, man, and I wanted to go and eat, you know, you know, something nice, you know.
Plus, it's had a lot of expenses we can spend.
Yes.
Yeah, we expect, and they said we need to do a lot.
So you think five hundred?
I was like you, I was thinking two fifty, but I mean.
Five hundred?
How, how much at?
We all taking out.
What, what are you thinking? Thousand?
At least, or fifteen hundred. Twenty-five years is a long time.
Is everybody?
I'm a check. You got a lot of years in this place, I do.
Is, is everybody okay with fifteen, one thousand five hundred?
That, that's gonna be more like a check.
I was, I was gonna say, I would.
You go to those big amounts in, um, gift cards, you go to fees.
I would do a check if.
The card, most cards only go up to five hundred dollars.
I'm, I'm bringing the point, like I said, I'm thinking about a cashier's check.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I'd rather have.
He can cash it, he can, I want, yeah.
I don't want a fifteen hundred gift card.
You know, like, you know, or, you know. Outback Steakhouse, the one in Colorado.
I said a thousand.
A thousand? Okay, sure.
I'm cool with it, one thousand.
Okay. All right, so we're looking at eight thousand wood with, with the gold, and then, uh, appreciate twenty-five years of service in his name.
Yep.
And then.
Service to the town here.
Put it down there, put it down here. And then, uh, Michael and Judy can handle it. I just have to be on sitting with you guys. And we're gonna try to shake the Monday. She probably can do that.
If he's awful Monday, it might hurt something.
Hey, Monday's the last day.
We just asked him to come to the neighborhood that night.
Yeah, Judy, when you see him, maybe you could just tell him to be at the meeting Monday night.
I can't hear you.
I said, when you see Donald, Mark, just tell him he needs to be at the meeting Monday night.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna tell him, come up. See if he can make it to the meeting Monday night.
And if not, we'll come up with a solid. Just don't make it to.
Tell him he's not going to miss it.
That's right.
You can give it to him with cars.
I wanna, I wanna recollect back on something real quick. Uh, the ADA requirement.
ADA requirements?
Uh-huh. If, if we're working on getting the building up to two for ADA, um, that would actually fall under the, should fall under the Capitol Improvement Plan, correct?
Yes.
We have twenty-eight thousand in that right now, correct?
Yes.
It was a three-year span. And what year are we in right now? And we haven't spent any of it on the building yet? In the year number two now?
Yeah, we're doing a five-year plan.
Oh, five year, I'm sorry, five-year plan.
But this is your second year, I think you're into that.
We're getting ready to go into year three. If we're gonna be working to do all that, why don't we go on and start contract or getting bids on some of this stuff to fix these, fix the rest of the building?
So maybe go to the.
Yeah.
But so when we get a contract or a con, will you, do you want me to, can I talk to her?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you want, see if that, Mr. Key, let me see, he's out there.
Brandon Key.
Yeah, see if we can beat, like, I should work, someone's told to look at that one.
Okay, so Monday, Monday afternoon would be good if you could do that.
Yeah.
Before the meeting.
Before the meeting, yeah. But anytime during the week, after.
Just need to get in touch, just need to get in touch with him and see what his guys are gonna refer, and just let me know.
Meet him in the evening, that way he can go and go support.
Yeah.
I mean, get rolling.
And we'll probably better off putting a metal instead of the shingles.
You talking about the roof? Uh, well, I don't, yeah, yeah. We gotta start, we gotta start somewhere. I don't know if we'll get that far yet.
That is a start, that's a start.
Yeah, that's a start.
Uh, it may even be a s- starting with that and coming down. Cause I hate to start replacing the software boards and all that, and then the roof might be fixed, and, yeah, your problem's not solved.
That's the reason I like the one you guys to do, where we got done. Now, let me ask you, uh, do you want, you want to look at this building and the restaurant roof at the same time? You want two different, what do you want? Two different, I mean, I know it's gonna be bills, so you got. Do you want, need to mention that we have two buildings to be lived at?
Yes, yes, might as well want to eat it.
Well, the, uh, five-year plan thing, that was for the club, and for this, um, it was.
Well, uh, five year plan thing, that was for the club house and for this, um, it was for everything, the budget that we're working on right now, um, the only thing in that is for the office.
You voted on it, it was five years for twenty eight thousand dollars?
It was for the club, when we voted on it, it was for the club house and Tito. It was for both, and y'all started on the club house.
Mr. who, who we're doing is, we're getting the buildings that people are selling, we're getting them to get funds first. Gotta take it bite by bite, can't take, can't tie them all.
It was for both of them, and y'all started.
The first year that started, the first year that started on that, we're going on to year three now and haven't done anything to this building at all.
Nobody comes to come to a standstill, nobody kept, everybody kept going back and back and forward, and back and back, nobody did anything.
So, what do you want it?
Moving forward.
Well, they do both.
Right now, we're just, right now, we've got, we've got to get the roof straight on the restaurant.
Right.
If we don't do anything else, we've got to get the roof straight on the restaurant, because we've got to get somebody in there, or we've got to put it up for sale, or.
That was, I was gonna mention that as well, can we get a full sale lease sign put on that property? Keep on from Jared Haller with the town's office number on it, just to see if that would help.
Okay.
Getting it occupied, I used to.
Release or sale?
Or lease or sale.
Has you heard anything else from Alex?
I, I haven't, I haven't had communication with him, I hadn't seen him about two months.
Contemplating the idea.
Yes, ma'am.
I got a text that, um, it's the message the other day from somebody.
Okay.
Wanted to know if it was for rent, the restaurant.
Okay.
And I said back, I said it's for rent and for sale.
Okay.
And I saw this person in person, and she said the reason she wanted to know if it was for rent is because Alex was looking for a bigger place, I said, he's already been and looked at.
Okay.
But I don't know, I mean, that's all I know, I do know I was contacted.
So, she said Alex wanted a larger place?
A larger place.
That's one of the holdups they're contemplating, is because they said the kitchen is much larger than they need, that's why I'm a little bit confused.
Probably need larger seating capacities, I think is what they get that, does that make sense, like?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, we, we got the perfect building for them, but they don't have to use the part of the kitchen.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Well, and if you, any of the residents have any other suggestions, please reach out to us, uh, text, call, email, if y'all have a recommendation, we need something that the residents are gonna support and stuff, and keep in. What residents, do you wanna, I'm talking to.
Yes, Dave?
Yes, well, I'm talking to all of them, we're on the live as well, Mr. who.
So, you gotta find the right person.
Yes.
With the right price that you got to have, no, you gotta have the amount that you gonna have to have.
Yep.
You can't give to one person that he can't make it stop with.
That's right, I agree, you got two or three.
What Tim's talking about just wouldn't work.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the question of everybody that's sitting in here, Mexican restaurant, Italian restaurant, home cooking restaurant, if any of those are here in Jared, which would you actually go and support on a regular basis? Wh- what would you support?
Either one that own food quality.
Price.
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 Nothing is gonna survive that.
You should be taking it.
I mean, as far as good price, either one, doesn't it?
Nothing is gonna survive that, you need to get rid of it, it is in a poor location for a restaurant. Alex has got ninety five, look, he ain't dead in the face, ain't nobody coming off ninety five, two miles, a mile and a half, to come in here and eat, it's, it's a.
It for you?
No, it's a bad location.
They have done it.
Well, and that all we've had is.
You got the habitat, put up a.
All of them forty two.
A billboard that down ninety five and direct them right here.
It's three thousand dollars.
You gotta pay for that, that ain't free.
That's, that's a pile of money, it's gonna cost you right there, it's a tall bit. Three thousand dollars.
Somebody's been put one of them, they didn't ever come in here.
It just, that's a pile of money, what you're trying to talk about, that.
We gotta get beat up, right there.
I mean, that's a pile of money, that you have to do that, and, but didn't.
So, I can ask the question, if you don't want a restaurant, cause you're not wanting it, cause they're not local, or they're not gonna come in from out of town, off of ninety five, what is it that you want to happen to take over in there?
Sell it.
What you, but I'm asking.
Sell it.
What are you trying to sell it to, because if you're saying nothing's gonna go to it, that's not, nobody's, they're not gonna come to it then, just because somebody buys it.
If nobody wants to buy, it's a party, bad, it's a bad.
Just asking you.
I'm just asking, nobody. You got the right, 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 money, go with the right place, money.
Now, I'm, I'm speaking Mayor Wilson.
We don't have to deal with it.
Right, and getting it up to town's hanging.
Yes, we need, we need to be rid of the building.
Y'all got a headache, it's, it's sitting right there, it's been there, it's gotten worse, they ain't got a vote.
It's a money pit.
More money on the roof.
That's right.
Does anyone know exactly how much is in there?
Who put all that money in first place?
A council?
Huh? Who put all that money in first place?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, the council was.
Not this town.
No, that's.
I believe you said that you can't do nothing about it, don't know what.
I, well, I, I think Pauline had a question.
Do you actually know how much is in there now? Back when, I don't, you were not on council, because we were sitting back here, and we had a printout, and when they finished the restaurant, it was six hundred and forty four thousand or something.
That's right.
Look what's been put in there since then.
That's right.
You probably got close to eight hundred thousand. Why you keep putting money in there saying, well, if we do this, we'll get more money, doesn't make sense, you can't get out, what's already in there?
We need to stop.
It's not assessed at that.
It's gonna go all through the way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The problem is, everybody does not support them, like they need to be supported when they get in there, every one of them that I have seen open, they are great from the get-go, and then it ends up being a problem, because either you gotta eat out of the go box, my goodness, or you have to walk up and order your food, my goodness.
Well, we need to sell it.
Well, I'm sorry, but I can't afford to eat out every week.
I'm ha- but I'm saying, you don't have to eat it every week, I'm just saying, if you don't think it's gonna work for y'all to keep it and rent it, how do you think anybody else is gonna think, I wanna buy it, because, ooh, they're gonna come way over here to come eat there? If you're not thinking they would do it just for any little thing, why would they do, you know what I'm saying, you, it's just not making sense.
Well, the thing about it is, if we sell it, and they can turn the restaurant, or make whatever they want to, it's on them, the town does not need to spend any more money on that building or that restaurant.
Exactly.
That's it, it's, it's their baby, if they buy it, they make it great for them, we're supporting when they eat there, but if they don't make it, then it's their loss, the town is lost enough.
And we do not need to spend another penny on the clubhouse, it will never be refurbished.
Same thing with that.
It will.
I'm sorry, I thought, the last meeting, y'all said y'all were working on fixing things, so they can still be rentable, and you were still gonna do rents, but now we're being told that we're not even gonna refix it at all.
I, I don't think anybody said that.
Okay.
I'm just, what did you, the last thing?
Uh, I'm sorry, nobody, we haven't said that tonight, that nobody, we just said, we're gonna have to wait.
The last thing.
Other things that we, we have to come first, and then we'll work, take stages and take care of.
Alright, well, what I, what I need council to do, and I've asked for you guys to do this before, do not say it out loud, because we are live, and we have people in front of us, but you need to start thinking about a price tag for the restaurant.
What's the tax assessment?
Uh, it's a little over four hundred thousand dollars.
Why?
Right, and you have to get a realtor in there to assess it and do a comparable, uh, sale, see what other challenges about.
And.
Sales, I don't wanna see to get it here, I mean, that's, I don't know.
There is a gentleman that is interested in buying it, and I actually told him to either send a certified letter with the amount of money that he is willing to pay, or either walk down here and hand a piece of paper to Judy and put it in her hand, um, uh, have not heard anything to Judy, uh, so, I'm gonna say that she has not seen him.
I see, okay.
Well, and we do have one that wants to rent it, but not open it as a restaurant, they just wanna use it for manufacturing their goods. But.
That's the one he's buying, man.
And either, he could eventually buy it, he could, but, but this, yes, that's a lot of it, and we don't need to spend any more money on it.
Yes, ma'am.
When did the assessment go up to, did you say four hundred thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe it's four hundred, uh, I didn't know what.
I thought it was around two thirty.
Um, the last time I looked, it was right at four.
Wow.
So, when did it go up?
That, that I don't know.
We can get a sign to put that there.
We can get a sign there.
Get a sign, I said, all this.
Get the best price you can get for the thing, and get away from, cause it's gonna bury you.
It's a money pit, we gotta do, we gotta do it.
You're gonna take a loss, anything is total or nothing.
Mm-hmm, and it's gonna, we're gonna take a loss, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, don't get nothing about.
I mean, that's not the way you can look at it and think, we're not gonna take a major loss.
You're gonna lose that no matter which way you go.
That's right.
No matter which way you go.
We're gonna lose.
Alright.
So, what do you, what do you want, do you wanna get a sign to put in the window, if we sell a lease, check with Alex one more time, check with the zoning man that wants to rent it, or manufacturing his product, he does not want to open it up as a restaurant just yet, he says.
What does he want to mean in action?
He makes, um, ice cream, and he sells it to restaurants in Richmond, the restaurant that he, I mean, the kitchen that he had been using for a long time, the owner actually sold it, and the new owner wants to use it himself, so he's looking for a kitchen to manufacture their ice cream.
Cause the department will help you after having three people.
Well, he, he knows all that.
That's, that's why he need our kitchen, that kitchen.
Yeah, he, he needs a commercial kitchen, and that's something that Pat was working with before she, uh, had to take a leave, and, and she's got all that information, but, I mean, there is something to look at, but still, it's gonna be costly for us, we're gonna fix the roof, and then we're gonna do this, but he, he did agree, I believe I might, Judy, correct me if I'm wrong, he did agree to accommodate the operations of the building.
But he puts everything still in his name, and the town owns it, they're still responsible if he doesn't pay.
Right.
So, it doesn't make any difference, whether it says the name or not, but he, but he doesn't pay.
I meant, utilities, water, I, I'm talking, I'm not talking about, we're not gonna pay anything for him, he signs a lease and he takes it, and I'm talk, I'm saying, I've not talked to him, that's what was happening just before Pat had to take a leave.
But Pauline is correct, because that's exactly what happened when Mr. Young was in there with Peter Rabbit.
Yeah, you're.
Yeah, I, I understand that, I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying, you know, in the past, we'd say, well, we're gonna pay the light bill, and we will have this in Jared, it's like, none of that.
No, but if he doesn't pay it, you're still responsible.
I, I understand that, but what I'm saying, we're not even gonna go that way with him, or anybody, we're just not doing it. And I, I don't understand why, what you're, you're saying, we, we made the mistake of allowing someone to get a few months rent free to do so and so, and we agreed to let some of them keep, um, their utilities in Jared's name, none of that is going to happen again, and if he defaults or whatever, then it comes back on us, then it does, but we're not gonna take that, that responsibility.
Yes, ma'am.
When I supposed to go in the past, we supposed to start matter and go forward.
So.
So, that's what I was talking.
That's what we're trying to do, is go forward.
No, you're not, you've gone into the past.
No, I just said, we're not, I said, we're not going to do that again.
But you brought it up.
Yes, I did, because I mean it, we're not going to do that again.
Alright, so, we're gonna get a, we're gonna get ASAP, we're gonna get signage, for sale, for lease, put it in the window.
If, kind of Jerry's.
Well, I have advertisements in the paper, I mean, the people will ride through.
Not many.
Well, we're thinking about maybe Richmond Times and the other newspapers.
Yes, ma'am. Do you put in an independent messenger at all?
They're not on the.
There's no, there's no longer.
Yeah, all digital, they're, they're online.
I mean, you can't do it that way?
I mean, we still put it on, but.
You can't do it that way, I mean, a lot of people go through independent messenger through their phone, I know I do, I know quite a few of us that do, that would be a great access, other than the access from the town of Jared. Because basically, the only people, the only people truly that will see it are people that, that, that live here, or somebody that's delivering, or lost, or they're looking on their phone, and it still says that O.G. Ribbs is open, or somebody that goes to BJ's and happens to see it.
We got, we gotta know what the, the tax assessment is, we've got to know what comparison, comparison of other towns, smaller towns, we've got a lot to do before we can actually advertise it.
I don't go back in the past, I've been told not to, but I am, but the reason it did roster it is it's deep in debt, the main reason is all of the money that was put in it, that was not supposed to be put in it. But it was kept putting in there till it got so high, the rent did, that the people that was renting it couldn't pay it. But people kept write this check, put this money in there, write this check, and they did, off of the town, and now everybody's squawking about that roster. Go back and make them people to put the money in it, all of the money they put in, they fold. They got the money, they got the money.
You got the record book, cause we can't find it.
Well, I, it was four, I got in here, but I, I.
No, that's what I can't. I, I could, I could just see.
You got a whole lot of references to here.
I got a lot of references to him. Yeah, yes, on, just on reference to his statement, if the doors weren't locked, maybe you could found everything, there, nobody could get in here, y'all the only ones with, with keys.
Out of bars.
Probably I can't hearing y'all about, you can't find this, can't find that, this is why, one of the reasons we keep going back into the past, because a lot of the things have still not got right yet.
That's right, they haven't.
It's not my fault, it's not my fault, anybody's fault, that it went down, it went down, except for the ones that did it, and the only ones that did it are the ones that knew about it when they locked the doors, and nobody could get in, except for the ones that had a key.
Who was it?
I don't know, I just. First of all, I am just asking, and I am doing my best to stay as calm as I can, I'm just asking, because I do care, I do care, even though I'm not, I don't live in town, I do care.
That's right.
That's right.
But I, you lock doors, you change locks, you give keys to certain ones, and then throughout all of this, I hear different folks inside and out, while I'm waiting, saying that other people have come in with them when they go in here.
Where, let's add your.
So, well, I'm just saying, there's a lot of stuff that does not add up, a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff.
Nobody's supposed to be up here in this office with Judy.
Uh, excuse me?
Anybody can come up there.
No, anybody, anybody, any camera.
I mean, to come up here and do anything, it's paid, spent for hours and hours and hours already.
Oh, my.
They see you going in and out, but.
I can't believe she's saying that.
Alright, alright.
One more thing, one more thing.
Oh, oh.
We have, um, um, Wanda has found a laptop that she would like for us to get, uh, it's, uh, that, we can't get in it, the password, password, you don't wanna open it. The password that, um, Pat was given will not open it, she cannot get in herself, and.
What was it, two hundred? Two thousand?
In the, the.
You want me to get it?
We can get into the computer, we cannot get into the Microsoft account.
Microsoft.
Microsoft.
Okay.
I don't know if, after the meeting.
Yeah, well, go look at it, cause that's a good, that's a good, that's a good laptop.
And that would be great if we could do that, but if not, she's found one.
But yeah, I mean, that's, that's a, a good expense.
Michael, can you stay, uh, give me a minute, so you can help us, you know, when you show me this?
Alright, yes, ma'am.
Nobody, but.
Have we voted on that yet? With Mr. Allen?
Yeah, she, but he was appointed last week, I mean, last month.
So, y'all went and just automatically went on and let him be the. We actually didn't.
We, we did not, we did not automatically, the town manager can appoint someone to assist her when she is not here, and she has asked Mr. Allen to help her, and he has agreed to do so.